...did potentially a part one, which was the temporary green space around Brexville Road, and they looked at that as being about 125,000 to 150,000. And they said if we could generate enough traffic there, it might begin to transform the area. And I was excited about that. So they're taking it in parts there as well, not all together. And then part two would be what they termed the Village Green, anywhere from about 1.75 million to maybe 2 million. And this would be the grassy area that Vice Mayor was talking about, maybe the amphitheater and things of that nature towards the back, more informal, but where we'd have to do some programming and so forth. So I also looked into some things about the amphitheater and read an article that was in our Gazette in May, May 23rd, talking about Broadview Heights looking at the Cuyahoga County Developmental Supplemental Grant somewhere in the neighborhood of potentially $50,000 to $75,000 to help them with the amphitheater. Now again, just because the article is written doesn't mean it's going to materialize, but to me it speaks to a community looking at alternative sources of funding, which can be very valuable when you're trying to do a project of this nature. Then to kind of go into the last area, the alternate housing that Councilperson Nerjusy spoke to as well, I have always been and I will continue to be an advocate of looking at alternate housing, smart housing that is right and appropriate for our community. Maybe it's because of my opportunity to have worked for 14, 15 years with our senior population and in our population in general, I do believe that there is a need there. I think it needs to be a smart move, just like we're talking about these other things, nothing that is reactionary. Mayor did give us information that we had requested from Council about available land parcels, and those land parcels were a listing of municipal as well as privately owned parcels that could potentially be a place for alternate housing. We have not yet received, and Mayor, and I know you're busy, but we're looking for, we've asked for a listing of the buildable parcels, because we know that although they may exist, they're not always buildable. So once we get that, that will give us another basis to look at. We may say, it just doesn't exist, that appropriate land space just doesn't exist for that. But I don't think that we can just throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. And I think the terminology we use of alternative housing or alternate housing is critical, because I do believe that there's so much misunderstanding and we hear words like affordable housing, we hear words like multifamily housing, and that creates even a need, it creates in all of us, I think, a fear of, we don't want this, we don't want our community to change. And again, I think we need to be educated very well about what these options are, and maybe when we hear them all on the table, we'll say, no, it's still not for us. But I think we're wrong to say no from the beginning without actually having looked at the process. And we're going to talk about it a little bit more, I'm sure, when we get into our Council caucus, or our workshop rather, regarding our amendments to the charter. So I'll hold the rest of my thoughts for that, but thank you.
Thank you. Eddie?
I may not like defer my opinions to when we have a finance meeting and we can lay out what we can afford to do, because we can have all the opinions that we want, but it's really going to be based on what we can afford to do as a city.
Good. Ken?
Thanks, Mr. Vice Mayor. I had a lot of time to ruminate on this, and I've been to all of the meetings, as most of us have. I think the most important thing is, as we look at moving forward, is to get some hard data. You know, there was tepid support for the types of things we were talking about from our constituency. I haven't heard a whole lot on the business sector, so I guess I'll divide it into two areas of thought. One is on the street skate project. And first question is why? You know, what are you trying to accomplish? And have the business community or our traffic people come to us and said, this is something that's critical. I don't know that that's been the case, although I can't disprove that, but I think that's important to incorporate what they think about this. So I'd like to have an inclusive process, as several of us have alluded to. Before we envision this thing out, we've seen several types of proposals, but is this really what there's a need for? I mean, do we have a need for this in the center of our town? And I make these statements being a lifelong resident and knowing that when the Willow Freeway gave way to I-77, Independence changed a lot, and our center of town was no longer a place, a destination, or a place where, you know, tens of thousands of people went every day. So we have had these discussions and concerns, you know, since the early 1970s, and so we are trying to put together proposals that incorporate years of concern and years of not sure what to do. So I guess the first thing I'd like to do is make sure that we have an inclusive process with our business community, whether it be downtown or everybody, to try to find out, are we trying to solve a problem? I mean, you know, we keep talking about the downtown area, the let's get their input before we go ahead and do anything. Secondly, and I don't know that that's necessarily the, you know, case, I haven't seen any published or I haven't attended a meeting where the business community or the people who use the street or the residents are crying out for something that we need to do there. Second thing is, what are we trying to accomplish in terms of function? Are we trying to divert traffic or change traffic? You know, I don't know. I know it's a busy area. The complaints that I get are there's too much traffic, and this is from people who live on some of the residential streets. Obviously, the truck issue with going up and down Stone Road has been the paramount issue, and that's not something that we're discussing here. A third approach that I'd like to see is just doing some research on it and talking to some people who are in the know, and I'm not one of them. The trees in the center of the road may not be the best approach. Maybe we should be looking at planters or something that might be smaller for visibility purposes, but also for the fact that planting a bunch of trees in hot asphalt isn't a good success rate for long-term survival. So do we, are we, do we have the type of trees that could survive in that environment? I think that's something that we should be looking at as well. And in terms of the burying the lines, you know, is there a compelling public purpose? It's what, $700,000 or so a mile to do that was an estimate? And so if there's a compelling reason to do that, then I guess the city could commit to that, but I have heard one, other than we don't like the fact that there's lines there. And so, you know, I guess I'd be very cautious about proceeding along those lines. So, you know, I generally understand what we're, what, but I like to try to get the why answered before we actually move forward with that. And as Eddie said, you know, all of these things cost money, and I know there's one less basketball player who, our time works in town, whose salary used to go to the City of Independence and doesn't anymore. With respect to the green space, I still believe very strongly that that's a public purpose and a public place. So I really have liked the idea of what we were talking about, trying to do something there, but I think we need to do something that is a lot less expensive. I really do think that, I got taken aback by some of the, by the cost figures that we were given, and I just, it's hard to justify that. I thought the idea of creating a public space was that if something else comes down the line, down, you know, some years down the ride, it wouldn't be hard to convert that if that were necessary. But I really think we should get more ideas, review more projects. You know, the price tag, I just thought didn't, would be hard to justify that, I really did. And I like the idea, I just, I think that's too expensive for what we were talking about, or you space it out over a long period of time and make that commitment to doing it. But again, there hasn't been a huge demand that I've seen thus far. Can we use this area to spark some type of economic activity as a destination for people to come into downtown Independence? And I still think that's very possible. I'd like to see some hard data on programming. I think we have some pretty good ideas about, you know, getting people, how do we bring people in and recognizing that our community is not a large community, so to actually want to go out to the outside community, but are we going to be able to do that? Do we, if we put up different amenities, if we put up an amphitheater, if we did have a large area where you could have entertainment, like a picnic grove type of a setting, or, you know, we talked about home days, but you could use this every weekend in the summer. If you did that, would people come to it? And I like, I think we need to do more research on that, and, you know, have somebody who has done this before or can do something for us, just to reach out and find out, what does it cost to do that and what are the benefits of it? You know, I think that makes sense to do, but I'd like to have some hard data before we commit to doing something like that. But I've always envisioned this as kind of a, of a community, a real community asset and gem, where we had, you know, various volunteer groups sponsor a grove of trees or a picnic bench or something like that, you know, where we had the citizens involved with doing that, rather than just making a quote-unquote "city project," where we come in and construct, and just like anything else we do, make this a people's park and make it, you know, honor some of our nationalities and our heritage and some of our businesses and, you know, create something that people really want in the center of town. My experience has been that, you know, retail is very difficult in the center of town, and so that's what part of my philosophy is going on, is it's like the reality that so many things have not gone forward, that we need to have something that would be, could draw people to town. And then of course, what are our residents and what are our business residents? What would they like to see? So I think we still have to answer some of those types of questions. So that's kind of where I look at it. So I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't go forward, but I think we should go forward cautiously with a lot more facts and figures before we should really commit to some things. I really want to see what problems are we attempting to solve? What could we be if we did these types of things? What transformational opportunity is this? Because it's been like this for a long time, and it's nobody's fault. It's reality of what happened when we changed important traffic patterns. But we've got residents who live there who are concerned about the traffic as it is. Is this traffic update going to help them from a safety perspective? Does it impede progress in other areas if we make it harder for people to go through our center of town? I mean, those are some answers to questions I think we have to get before we move forward.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, did you share some positive views on this?
Yes, and thank everyone, I thank everyone at Council for their positive opinions. Appreciate them. Speaking of the street skate specifically, just to visualize, so everyone understands what the street skate is, it's from the edge of the roadway from the curb to the outer edge of the sidewalk, so it's where all the brick pavers are, where they're kind of unjating, heaving, the brick tree rings around the trees that are planted between the street and sidewalk. In some instances, the street skate may go beyond the outer edge of the sidewalk, there may be some landscaping that buffers some of the parking lots, for example, by U.S. Bank and also by Scratch Restaurant. There may be a landscape buffer on the, that would be the eastern edge of the sidewalk to kind of break up the concrete and give it a little warm, welcoming feel. And I certainly think that everyone in the room could probably agree that those bricks are rather tired and they are heaving and unjating and certainly not the most attractive gateway to the City of Independence. When you look at all of our city facilities, this building, Civic Center, Park, the way that they're maintained, the way that they're built, it's of the utmost highest quality. And when you drive down Brexville Road to the center of our town, it certainly doesn't appear to meet that same standard. And I would appreciate the Council's willingness to upgrade that area. When we invest public funds to upgrade our public realm, it will help to spur private development, private funds and private investments. We are faced with a challenge with the reality that traffic flows are not as high as they used to be, as Congress has outlined with the internet. Retail is drastically changing. We have a relatively divided or three-sided market, being that the National Park is our eastern boundary, so there's no population density or population base to the east of us. So for retailers and for investors looking at the City of Independence, that area in Brexville Road is not optimal. And that's a reality that we all have to come in agreement with and come to reality with. But as a sense of place, coming into the City of Independence, I do feel that we need to improve that public realm just for our residents and our businesses. And I know Congressman Drakis is looking for hard data and facts, and I think if you ask a business on downtown, would you like this area cleaned up, are you going to tell you yes? And I don't know how you can quantify that, maybe survey, but yeah, you can certainly do that. And I did hear from Vice Mayor that perhaps we terminated at the southern end, the southern border of Public Square, which could help to reduce the costs. And I also heard doing it in phases, because it is laid out in phases. My personal opinion is if you're going to do any construction work along Brexville Road, you do it as one whole project. You don't do from Romito's Pizza to Fundressa Funeral Home one year, and then from Fundressa to Public Square the next year, have the whole area torn up for three years and then you go and you go and do it once. Obviously, finance is the utmost concern. We need to sit down, determine how this can be funded. I do believe it is part of the Brexville Road tip, which we're realizing tip dollars from the Indian Clinic throughout the street. Currently, those funds are going toward the debt service or ceiling drive. Once that's paid off, we can transition that funding to pay for the street skate project. So it is a tip district for our funds available. We have and we continue to seek out any grants, opportunities that are available to us. We did apply for the elevator in Historic Hall. Unfortunately, we did not qualify for that grant, so we were out awarded that grant. Many of the grants that are available, the City of Independence does not meet the qualifications because it has to do with incomes within the community and not unfortunately, but fortunately, our incomes are very high and we don't have the financial constraints that any other communities around us have, so a lot of the grants that are out there do not apply to the City of Independence. How far is that particular? How far north is it? That would be a question for John. Do you know, Jeremy, how far the...
I think if I'm working with John already too, I mean, the way the tip laws are now, you get each project. If there's a project that we could have downtown, that would be a tip by itself, so the tip here might just stay in place, and once we can get the debt service paid off for the ceiling project, then that can be shifted towards. But we could look at every new project that we have in downtown area, it could be its own individual tip, because tips last for 30 years, and we have to maximize the full 30 years of getting that income. You don't want to use an old tip that's already been around for 10, 12 years, which we have, I believe some of those in Rockside have been around since 2002, 2003, and are already halfway through its existence. That's why a few years back, we took some of the properties that hadn't been developed, and we took that out of the tip district so that when something comes along such as Topoff, it'll start the 30-year period running there, so. But Mayor, my thing is that this is a long-term, that right now we do have a lot on the table with the Northeast quadrant, with Rockside Woods and Topoff in that area there, and we have a company interested maybe in the Northwest quadrant, so we have, but I'm looking, I'm looking long range, long past our lifetime either that, and you get to do things, you know, you do it properly with a long-term view of things, or you do short-term and hope that people forget about it when you're gone, if I didn't have a long vision, but I think we should do it right. And the downtown, it, to me would seem, you know, I can remember what it was like, I can remember back in 61, the Bullet Theater was there, you had United Savings in that same building, and Palmer Cleaners, you had businesses on both sides of the street, the shopping center was by, the food market and that, so there was a time when that was, of course, that was a different time, but I think now is the chance to try to envision, look at it 50 years, 75 years, and try to leave the groundwork, even though we might not, you know, the first thing may not be done for five or 10 years, but I think hopefully with our growth program, which we want to get to the point where we're just doing maintenance, more maintenance work than road projects, and be able to invest more money into the downtown area. Because like you say, a quick fix is not going to, might satisfy for the short term, but I think that, you know, if that land in downtown is not going anywhere, I think we could get properly, look at the financial aspect of it properly, and, you know, always be open to any developer or people that want to invest money here, be ready to work with them. But I think we need to show that we have a vision of that, and if there's no vision and no movement, or at least planning part, there's going to be nothing happening down there. And that's, that's where I think that we should look long-term, even past our lifetime, and hopefully future Council will pick that up and that we develop that. And what that, whether it be a measure of housing and retail and businesses, I've had a number of people that have businesses on Rockside that wouldn't mind moving their business to a more, you know, like Brexwell has some businesses in their downtown area, the shopping center, that they said they'd like to have a less tech to carry them if we have an inviting, you know, environment. So I don't know if you ever hear that, everybody knows that there's a number that would, wouldn't mind having a smaller office setting there. So the big thing is to move forward, and that is where we have to, it has to make financial sense, and it might not in the short term, might not have the financial wherewithal to do it, you know, the next five years or so, but if we plan ahead, we have asked for a five-year planning, maybe even a 10-year planning, but to have revenue sources that could, you know, fund something that, I think people would be proud of. Again, a lot of people, you like a quick fix, to have something, have snappy rakers, it's done, but we're not going to be able to do that here until we are able to plan and have a strong reason. I think that we have a good agreement here on what needs to be done. It's just a matter of getting the dollar, you know, the dollars should make sense to what we want to do now. I think if, Council, you will be able to take a few comments from the, from the audience just to see there's input on this, probably just for a, maybe a 15, but again, we're not, we're talking about, we're not talking about...
[inaudible]
But yeah, please take the mic and please state your name, so that this way for the record, then you'll be able to accurately... And please, one of the, you know, the comments to, just to...
Good evening, we are in the phone, and I'm in Cannon Park. And my question is, you guys have come together here to talk about the green space, but you're not talking about how much money you have to start off with. So the discussion that you guys are having right now is really, it doesn't, it doesn't have any weight, because if you don't know how much money you have, how do you start something? And what does it look like in terms of, what do you see as far as the bricks and whatnot? What do you want? And, give me one second. So you talk about the bricks are coming, they're old, but how are you going to replace them? Like, do you have a vision for us to see? So the, the street skate that you're talking about...
Well, I think that, Jeremy, I think we had some samples of street, of street skating for the, for the downtown area.
It was in the presentation?
It was in the, we had a number of presentation meetings, these were presented there.
Okay, so I feel struggling with the finance. How can we not have a number to start off with?
Oh, we have numbers...
This is a meeting that you're supposed to come to terms with this. There should be, we have a budget of 3 million, this is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to spend it. I mean, isn't that what you guys are voting on?
No, we were, I was discussing, we're voting on it. We have, we engaged the environmental design group, they did a comprehensive study of the downtown area, they provided a number of renderings of street skate possibilities and costs, cost ranges and phases for that. So it's a discussion of if Council is moving forward, how would they look forward in phases? Would they like to have varied utilities? And just to, at a high level, get an idea of what the potential future cost would be based on Council's wishes, and then how will we own the budget and make that happen moving forward.
And so, right now, the pigments are all red. What do you see in that? What's your vision of it? Like, are you, are you removing them to rocks, like what happened in my call this past? Like, what's your vision of it? Being replaced?
There's a number of different materials that it could be replaced with, it could be replaced with stamped or concrete, it could be replaced with pervert's, pervert's pavers, it could be replaced with similar bricks, and each come with a different cost.
And so, and so, right now, you're getting ideas from amongst yourselves to then move to the next level. I'm kind of confused how this is working.
Right now, Council is discussing if there is interest to move forward with the project and how it should move forward.
So, and then one other thing, sorry, I'm, I'm due to this, so I need to know what the tip law is on. What, what can somebody explain that to me?
It's a very long stuff.
Oh, is it?
Yes, so...
Or something simple?
No, it's not. What tip, it is another source of revenue for a community and for, what happens within Independence is that there's a certain percentage of the real estate tax that goes to the county for different county, whether it be the metro parks, whether it be the human health service, there's a certain segment of your tax dollars that goes to that. But if you have a tip area, and John has developed, I don't know how many tips we have now...
It's a financial tool that we utilize.
It's a funding 16 at least.
Taxes for financing.
And it has to be approved by the, by the county and also by the state of Ohio. That diverts that money from going to the county and it puts it into the city and helps it, you have the state infrastructure and what the reasons are, what the spending is. So it's another source of revenue that, that we have access to that normally communities wouldn't have.
Okay, well, thank you, that's a good question.
I'd like to add something else. That tip money, let's say that the taxes on the Cleveland Clinic are, before they did all the build-out, were $100,000. After they did the build-out, the taxes go up to 200,000, that extra 100,000 is the tip money. It's a change in value by what you've done. For the base value of the taxes stays the same. It's the increase in value and the new tax that comes on that increase in value, and that's your tip money.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else to light up?
I just, I just have a, Bob, Zach, the only question I have is, if you want to give the, you can answer, thank you. I just want to know, in terms of the street skate, whether that includes the area on the west side of downtown, the Nolet Shop, St. Michael's, you know, is it literally just a curbside?
Both sides of the street.
But I'm saying not just the street, does it go back to the lubbos and hot properties that don't make our downtown look very good?
We're hoping, Bob, that if that is done, that those properties would become more valuable to somebody else, they would purchase them, do something else with them, catch up to the village.
And there really is too many property owners on that side of the street, from Chestnut. It's basically the city and the church, right, St. Michael's, so...
Was there any plan to do anything with the city project?
Well, we've been working, we've been working with St. Michael's to come up with a comprehensive plan. St. Michael's controls some pieces of the plan that would, the city would need in order to make a development opportunity possible.
So are they working closely with the schools on that? Any, is there a church?
Yes, sir.
I've been a resident here for a little over 30 years, and one of the things I've looked at, because I've been in business, is the retail end. I kind of felt pretty sad for a lot of the people that are in the shopping center there. It really doesn't show itself, and it's, as I've seen and talked to some of the people, it's been very difficult for them, you know, in trying to make it go. It's really, as friends might have told me, it's like looking back in the 60s when they come here and look at the center of town, and it's like flashback, you know, it's like, wow, you know, this is really beyond the years, you know? And to keep the community really alive and moving, something like this probably for them should have been done a long time ago. And I think, as the mayor said, you know, to get this done, you want to do it now and you want to get moving, because it could be god knows how long until something really transpires. As far as the housing goes, I know Mary Jo and I have been in our home, we built it back when we came over 30 years ago, and many of our friends have left the community due to the fact that they couldn't find somewhere, like, we were looking, in fact, in Brexville across from St. Basil's, and we were looking to try to find something here, but we wanted something that really, we don't have to do a lot of maintenance to. And I think that if we can find an area that we can, you know, look into, I think it's going to be very helpful for a lot of people that we personally know that are wanting to stay here because they really love the community. There's nowhere to go, you have to buy a home, really, and then you got to put money in and fix it all up and then also maintain it. And I think we got a little spoiled when we see people that have this, like, across from St. Basil's, to have this, because as you age, of course, running a long year and doing the things that, you know, you once did, it becomes a little harder to do as you age. And I think to stay in the community that we love so much, we really want to be here, and we're hoping for the best that something would transpire that would keep... best that something would transpire that would keep us here. Because many of our friends have left here. And I don't know if you've known anyone as well, but we've known quite a few that left the community because they just couldn't find anything. They'd been hoping for some type of housing, small housing program that would offer something like this, like kind of like a community or whatnot, small housing. So but going back, I really believe that we have to move on downtown. Because if we don't, it's just another god knows how many years that kind of pass by. And, you know, people are really looking for something that they can go downtown and enjoy, you know, and and the retail shops as well. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The thing is, I wanted to ask you is about over in the shopping center, over by the post office, that's been there for years. Is there something we can do with that, put some businesses in there like we used to have back in the sixties and stuff? I know that since Fishers has been gone out of there and when Fishers burned down that canal down the tubes. But I was wondering over there by the post office, if you can put some more businesses in there?
That's not a whole thing. Actually, we'd like to get more businesses in there.
Businesses don't just move in. They look for prosperity to be able to thrive. And right now, the business analysis is obvious that they're not here. They don't think that they can make it. And the history of businesses coming in and going out have been significant. So until we provide something that makes a business draw, businesses will not come.
And then another thing, too. I've called the downtown Bedford, you know, I've gone down to downtown Bedford over there because that's where I go and take my train and then get my train fixed all the way down. Is there some way that, and their wires are buried underneath, I know that you want to do that. Is there some way, if you do do this, that next to the barber shop, the gun shop, the old stand shop, and the gun shop, you can put businesses in there and then over like by where Coons is out of by, go another building and put businesses there and have it go all the way down? Would there be a problem doing that?
No, that is one of the conceptual plans for the area is to build that out with businesses that are built up close to Brexville.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I, well.
Hi, my name is Anne Clement, and I live on the Ordeals. I grew up in this community, I love this community. This community has fantastic services.
Oh, boy.
I don't care if I see lines. I expect to see lines. We have electricity, we have all kinds of telecommunications. I don't care about the lines. I drive the street several times a day. Truthfully, I haven't noticed that the bricks are coming up. I always drive by Independence and through Independence with pride with and about the community and what everyone here and others have accomplished. Dr. Asif, you commented about the fact that businesses come and go. My rebuttal to that is, maybe the wrong businesses are looking here. To the gentleman that spoke spoke before about his friends are leaving, I'm sorry about your friends leaving. But you know what? I'm fifty-eight years old. And there are many of my classmates that have come back to the community because they like the community the way it is. So I'm not against change. I'm not opposed to change. If we do it the right way, and what's good for everybody. Right now, I deal with the gun range on on Pleasant Valley, the mine in my backyard. But you know what? I still like this community. It has fantastic services. I don't know how much more or where you expect us to grow. If you're trying to compete with the bigger communities, that's fine. I like the feel of the small community and the people and the residents and the services that we have. So you all are going to do what you want anyways. You hold a meeting at four thirty in the afternoon when no working, excuse me, no working person could attend with little communication about the meetings. So you know what? I'm going to keep that as it is. That being said, I'm also not opposed to change if we're doing it in the right way.
My name is Patty. Patty Gabb. I, I'm, I will try to be sure and and get to the point, but sometimes it's others. So I'm going to create some with me. I've been here for fifty years. I, I, I have moved with my parents and my brother. And I know it's been this, this, this change of atmosphere in our community's been a hot subject all through the mayors of Mayor Kurtz, through Fred Raybus, through Mayor Taglatti now. And I have, first of all, I, when I came into this town, I, I wanted to say that, I wanted to first compliment that that our service is fantastic. We and and our community is very nice and central. However, what, when, when I think fifty years ago, at the entrance of the City of Independence, I used to, was inviting, I saw restaurants like Pro Rios and and all the other, like Howard Johnson's and it was very vibrant, okay? And and now that I'm, I'm in my, in my sixties, I, I, I know this right now, like, it's how, if people want, I know the one thing I want to say, it's really, I think it's really a turnoff when you come in this community and you see nothing but weeds in, from coming north, from north to Independence, and we see nothing but weeds and big tall, like our, it kind of looks very burned down, like the old Howard Johnson's that went through different chains. It really looks like a eyesore. It's been that way for a long time. And and really, I think if I was a developer, I would get trounced by it. And and kind of even, with a new, a young couple coming in, I want to be inviting. And also, I, I know that I had parents that they would have loved to stay in the City of Independence. But unfortunately, my mom had to go elsewhere. My mom, yeah, she waited and waited. She would have loved to to stay in her own home. But she couldn't because the issue is, I think if you, I think if you would change your wording, instead of multi-housing, it sends out red flags, okay? I'm sorry, but it sends out red flags because people, because people relate to our neighboring community, like Garfield Heights in Parma, how they, how it's getting run down and how it's attracting low lives. I'm not saying different, I'm not blaming on a black, I'm not blaming on a white or Chinese. Like, there's bad and good in everybody. It's just that, I, I think if you would call it, I think if it would be more considered a cluster homes like, like, I know, I have friends in Brexville, as Mr. Mr. Diopola said, that they, that those houses are really nice. And and they, and and therefore, and they call them cluster homes for senior housing or or say like, or baby booms, okay, where 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 people could have their lungs taken care of, even if somebody has heart issues, it would be a good source for them. But and my daughters, I have twenty daughters that are twenty-five years old. It's like, there's no place to go here. Because it's like, it's like, it's kind of like we're stuck in a tiny capsule, you know, like, like, like the City of Independence is, looks just like it was sixty, I'm sorry, collection. It kind of looks stuck like way after Pach or or those other stores left, you know, it's like, it has, it's just stuck in a tiny capsule. And how could you attract young people to come in our community if, I mean, I have friends in, I know our community is small, but but so was Hudson. You know, why, why can't we get like little boutiques like at Hudson around, around the square that we have? And why don't we, why can't we utilize buildings that we have on Rockside Road? Like, I, I know sometimes people can like convert them to to restaurants or stores or or apartments. Why can't we do that? You know, utilize what we have on like a rock side road, you know, like, how could you expect young people to come in if if we're stuck in a tiny capsule? Because unfortunately, my, my daughter moved out into Lakewood because there's so much things going on. I, I mean, I'm not saying that you have to change things, but but make it more inviting, like, kind of like, re- face these old buildings on on Twenty One and and probably clean up the garbage eyesore on 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 Twenty One is where entrance from from downtown it roots. I think people, I think our developers would be more willing to set up shop, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? I guess, literally, I want to say as far as why we have it forward there, this is a council workshop. So the main idea of this is for council to share ideas. And we've gone through the gamut as far as the, the, as far as the downtown, you know, green space and the streetscape. So the idea of this workshop is to get an idea on council, how quickly and how much, for, you know, so the mayor can also gauge what the interest is as far as the streetscape and the and the green space is concerned. What we need to do, go hand in hand with that, is to get together with our finance director and just start the planning process. Again, we have to decide, you know, how far are we going to go as far as the streetscape. And you know, someone just said, talked about bearing utilities and really going from what we did on Risa and others have talked, you know, slow down approach on that. A lot of those dollars and cents, we have other, the city has other projects going on. Very, very, right next year, you're going to see a lot of road projects going on in Lafayette and also Brookside. And we also have the northeast water or top halls going in and the extension of Rockside Woods. So there's a number of projects going on. And of course, a lot of it takes money. And as I stated before, a lot of times, we don't get the kind of support or the aid in the state like other communities get because of the income revenue that we have from our tax dollars, income tax dollars. So but the sole purpose of this Bailey, I let the residents have an opportunity to speak if they wanted to do so. But the main idea of this workshop is for council to get an idea of what direction, for the mayor to engage, what kind of direction that we're going to be going in as far as that downtown area goes. No decisions are to be made, maybe we just want to get a flavor on what, you know, what they have and we're going in. I think probably hand in hand with this is a topic that we'll go into our next topic, is the alternate housing topic. And I think Kathy, I know you've wanted this on the agenda for a long period, and this other members too. And again, it's a discussion of alternate houses, I've been glad we're using that sort of multifamily housing, because that has a connotation that gets people riled up without, without really hearing. Sometimes, you mean, you think of things that, such as apartments that that certainly nobody wants, or even certain condominiums and things of that nature too. But alternate housing, I think Kathy mentioned, and I think Kathy mentioned, could be smaller homes on smaller lots, could be something that's like, like was mentioned, Maroni, it's like what they have across from St. Basil's too. And the discussion is, I think we've all come across residents, many residents have left the community. Sometimes, again, many of them do want to stay here if they have the opportunity. The other part of it is, there's many people that love the community just as it is now. And they figure you can stay here as long as you are able to. And if you want an alternative housing, you do have to move somewhere else. But our discussion here is that that's been something that's been on the table for a long time. I, Kathy, what, as far as our discussion that goes, are you looking at what part of town would be available? I know you had mentioned that with the mayor.
Right. I don't, do not have a dozen inch part because we do, mayor did give us that initial information where the parcels existed. And then, if you remember, council's request was to find out which might be potentially buildable. And so that, once we get that information, I think then we'll have to look at it and we'll see. We do not know at this point in time if we have enough buildable space and where that space is located. So it is premature to really talk. But when I, when I, and this is just my vision, and I know Hannah has asked for what, you know, more specifics. My vision doesn't mean it's our vision, obviously. But my vision is not, not attached housing. It is single family housing. It is just housing that is not on big lots like we have. One of the biggest deterrents for many of our people is the size of our lots and the space and bigger houses. So I can envision an area, if we have adequate space where we would have houses, that would be multi-generational. So it's not just for one population group. So if it's somebody like Ms. Gobbs, those who want to stay here, or other millennials who want to come back or whatever, or if it's people like Anne's friends who are fifty-eight, maybe some of them are coming back, maybe others aren't because there isn't an alternative for them. So just to look at an alternative to provide for us. And I know people, I've heard people over the years who've said, let them leave. I don't know why a person would ever say that. I would never say let them leave because they needed, or they wanted to have a better park for our kids, or because they wanted to have a swimming pool for our kids. I don't think we're that kind of community. That breaks my heart when I hear that. Now, doesn't mean my answer's right, I'm going to say that. But we need to listen to people. We need to look at the alternatives. And we need to see, to say let them leave or let them move somewhere else, it's just not, not what it's about. We should see, is it feasible to do something? I can hear. We may say no, you know. I mean, you know, we had a lot of opposition. I was on set on the Board of Education when we built the high school. There's still people, I'm sure, in this room and this community goes, we didn't need it. But because we didn't need it, or because some people felt we didn't, I still believe it was the right thing to go forward and look at that for our community. And that's all I'm asking of you now. I don't know that we'll ever see this materialized. I tend to doubt that we will, to be honest with you. But I don't feel that in good conscience, representing people in the community, and I don't only represent the people who want it, I represent the people who don't, but representing people, that we have a responsibility to look at it and see if it's a viable option for us. The specifics as to exactly where or the size, we don't know yet. We don't. But I think we have a duty to look at it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this topic?
I believe the same thing, Kathy. Councilperson, who said, I mean, alternative housing to me, the smaller house on a smaller. to me, the smaller house on a smaller lot, maintenance-free. And it, it's not just for seniors, I mean, it's for my daughter's generation too. They, they, they want to go live downtown and pay twenty-five hundred dollars a month rent, because they don't want to cut the grass, they don't want to do the windows, you know, they want their, their sidewalks fouled. But I think we can, we can offer that to them here. And, and on another note, keeping the people that helped build this town. My dad, I mean, the Solinsky family's leaving. I mean, that's crushing to me, because they've been a part of my church forever. They, they've helped build this community, and there's, they're at the time of their life now, they've got to step aside and, and they don't want all the maintenance and the hard work that they, they've laid to achieve their beautiful home, and they're gonna leave in Independence, because there's no place for them to go. I mean, it's, it's just not right. And I think in this type of alternative housing, it's not a burden to anybody else in this town. It's not a, a high-rise condominium complex, it's not an apartment complex. That, I hope we never see here. But a smaller version of what we all have and what we all enjoy, I don't think it'd change the face of Independence, but it would keep people here. And I, I think it would work. If we find the right spot to put in, that's not, that wouldn't affect anyone else's lives dramatically, I, I don't see a problem. And it's, for Mary Jane, it's not multi-family housing in my mind, it's alternative housing. It's the same thing you have now, up-to-date, brand-new, today's standards, on a small piece of property that you don't have to waste, you know, ten percent of your income to maintain. I, I don't know, I think it's needed. We are, we are caught in a time zone like Mayberry, I mean, this city hasn't changed. I'm fifty-eight years old, it's the same, besides Rockside Road, it's the same as what I was, I can remember. Do I want it to change dramatically? No, I do not. Do I want condos, apartments? Absolutely not, positively not. But we need some other kind of housing for people to stay and, and for our daughters and, and our kids to be able to proliferate. They can't afford to buy a half-a-million dollar home, they can't afford to buy a home for two-hundred thousand dollars and put two-hundred thousand dollars into it to fix it up to make it livable. I mean, that's what's happening in our town. And, 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 and what, what I see happening is that hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar home, somebody's parents die, they're not selling it, they're renting out. And it's changing the face of Independence. So unless we change the way we think and how we look at what our housing stock is, it's gonna get worse. So unless we, as a, as a body and as a community, visualize that, my God, what was happening to our town? We've got more renters now than ever before, I don't care what anybody tells me. The housing stock, the value, it's not going up anymore, it's going down, because these houses are getting depleted. Built up, the renter don't take care of them, the landlord don't care, all he wants is his money. So unless we start creating newer pockets to increase the wealth of what we don't have, I, I think it's a slow downhill ride, and you're not gonna stop.
I, I would agree with you, Kathy, on that, Tom. You know, the fear is that it's cheap housing. It's not cheap housing. These homes will cost more or have a value greater than many of the homes in Independence now. It's not inexpensive to build these homes today. All the factors are up, lumber's up, material, labor, so you don't pay two, three hundred thousand dollars for these homes. As Tom pointed out, taking two-hundred thousand dollar existing home and have to put a hundred thousand dollars into it, you still have a whole home. But these are the issues. The fear is, who will move in? It's not what, it's who. And that's the fear. We want to maintain a quality community, and we want to do it without fear.
And then just one more point, as a, as a builder, he would love to build a smaller home on a smaller lot, because he, he, he would make a lot more money. He's gonna sell that home price per square foot for a lot more than he's gonna sell that five-hundred thousand dollar home that he has to, that he has to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a half-eight-year-old aunt for. I mean, half-eight-year-old land in Independence and some subdivisions are two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars a lot. That's ludicrous. You could build a, a beautiful home for two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you don't have to spend that much on a piece of property. So I, I think we're missing the boat by not doing some type of alternative housing. On that same note, I know we're gonna talk about this one later, that's amazing. I guess I don't even know where to start talking about this, but I guess I'll wait for the next one.
Any other thoughts, uh? Bruce, do you wanna come in? Uh, Bruce, Realtor and everything, has some knowledge, any thoughts you wanna share with us?
Uh, just that, what Tom said earlier, it's a valuable piece of property to make green space for center of town. I think that would be the spot to put something like that. An alternative housing.
Something like that, with small homes on-
Yeah, smaller homes, smaller lots. It's definitely a need for, not apartments, no one wants to see that.
Yes, Pam?
Okay, so I know we don't have the specifics on where or when or how-
Yes, well, you, uh, you-
Why didn't make him get there? So, I, I know we don't have the specifics on who, what, when, where, how, how much, how big, how long, how far. So smaller homes on smaller lots, maintenance-free, that's amazing, because I've never seen a home that's not, doesn't require some maintenance. Are their property taxes going to be the same as ours? Who's gonna cut their grass, wash their windows, clean their gutters? There's no such thing as a maintenance-free home. So that, that verbiage kind of bothers me. And I'm just more curious, and I know you don't have the details, you've said it many times, but I'd be very curious to see the details when they become available.
The maintenance fee that I'm talking about, just so you know, is that if you were to live in an apartment, you wouldn't have to go shovel your sidewalks, you wouldn't have to go cut your grass, you wouldn't have to wash your window, it's all done for you. Or a fee, you're gonna pay for that. So I'm saying it's a community living, that you would pay a community fee to, like you would in a condominium.
So a homeowner's association?
No, it's not a homeowner's association, it's like a condominium, that you would pay a fee to, and they would take care of all that stuff for you. That's what people are looking for. They don't want to have to worry about calling the grass guy to cut their grass, calling the gutter guy to come clean their gutters out, calling the window guy to come wash their window. Some people don't want that.
Well, and they should, and, well, and if I could add-
We have builders on, I mean, this town will destruct. If, if we don't look for a culture, for not only ourselves, but for who, who else is around us, we will self-destruct.
And Anne, if I could ask, ask, respond to your question about the taxes, they will be owner-occupied, they're not gonna be rents with units, so just like you have to pay tax, I imagine, on your home, these people will too, and it'll be based on the value of the home, just like yours or mine is.
Uh, Pam, would you like to answer?
My name is Pamela Degler, and I live on Stone Road. Um, and just, just a couple points, listening to this conversation. Um, I've lived in this community, um, as an adult since nineteen seventy-nine. Both sides of my family both moved out to Independence back in the forties and built the homes. Um, I was able to buy my home from one side of the family, um, and that was an entry-level home. You have to define what you consider to be entry-level homes. And more importantly, I think where we need to have a discussion is, what do the majority of people who live in Independence feel their culture is? And when I describe culture, that is, why do they originally come to Independence? What do they come to Independence for? I think, um, it's been repeated numerous times, has a lot to do with the city services, but a lot of it has to do with the landscape. Um, in our scenario, in my scenario, both my relatives, when they moved out, they moved out from the Maple Heights area, they wanted more land, they wanted more space, they wanted the space to be able to raise a family, put garden in, enjoy doing the landscape. And I think that over the years, um, that kind of continues to perpetuate itself. I will challenge the fact is, is that I've heard a lot of people say, well, millennials don't want to move in. I'm happy to say that, as president of the Historical Society currently, when we had our last historic house tour, every one of the homeowners that had a historic house moved here specifically looking for an older home, renovated an older home. They're all professionals, and they're enjoying their life in Independence, and they are all forty per onion. I do not think that a community can necessarily be all things to all people all the time. Uh, I believe that a community, if you know the pulse and feel of what your, bulk of your residents are looking for, if you, if you can quantify that and then enhance it to what it means to the majority of the people that live here. For the people who want to downsize, if you have a six to seven thousand square foot house, and you want to downsize, there's plenty of opportunity in Independence to downsize. Yes, you'll have to sell your big square foot house, buy a smaller one, and maybe do some renovation on it. And I will agree that with other people's statements, there is no such thing as maintenance-free housing. Um, in the business that I do, so we know that I sell motorcycles and lawn mower equipment, I have the flip side. I've had a couple customers come in who have actually downsized, particularly, I have three clients that were in Arthurington, had big homes, sold their homes, bought small, smaller building kind of things, where they're supposed to walk in and have no issues. And they've been there for a year and a half to two years, and they walk in, and I said, I thought you sold your home? Yeah, I want a lawnmower. Why do you want a lawnmower? I can't stand the way this outfit cuts my grass, and this is what they have to do with. So the flip side of the point is, is if you talk to some of these people that have downsized, and it's always a decision, and maybe they didn't move to the exact right spot, but going to that smaller lot with the newer house amenities is not always the answer for all the people out there out there. And sometimes you don't learn that until you do it. Thank you.
I've got a comment, Pam, here. We live in a city that's comprised of two cities, the residential city and the business city. Rockside Road and Pleasant Valley pay ninety-seven, almost ninety-seven percent of all the benefits of what we get, and that's great. How do they look at this? How do they look at this process? Do they get apprehensive with this process that's going on? I don't have an answer, but I know they're looking at it. So we-
What does that mean?
Because if we lose businesses because they don't like what they see, we're all gonna be hurting. I know you don't believe this, but I do. I mean, there, there's nothing here to make them stay. They're here because of the environment and the friendliness and that, and it's very important because they pay the bills, we get the benefits. That's why people love to live in Independence. This is what's developing.
Well, that's, that, wait a minute, that's my point exactly. Thirty houses will not change the face of Independence, so why are we worried about it?
Did you look at the water? Did you look at the water issue? I mean, like, the, the, the house is right now on where that new development is, all that houses have caused more water issues. So you're, you're thinking about putting thirty homes right in the center of town where we have a problem in, with water in the city? Has that, I mean, we keep taking, keep taking our green space away and putting concrete, and we have nowhere to deal with our water. It, just last week, we had people complaining about the backyard's full of water. I was one of those people. We're, we have issues, those people out there have issues with their water. Those new development areas, where you're talking about five, six-hundred thousand dollar homes, they have issues with the water there. And how come that developer didn't do the, the ranch homes that are, you know, sixteen hundred square feet, not the thirty-five hundred square feet? I mean, they have phase one, phase two, phase-
Because we don't allow it. We do, we do not allow it.
You don't allow sixteen hundred square feet, like, to be built? Because you're, you're, you're not talking about attached homes-
If you're gonna build a sixteen hundred square foot home, and you're gonna pay two-hundred fifty thousand dollars for a piece of property, eight and a half? You'd be a fool to put a sixteen hundred square foot home on a valuable piece of property, exactly. Do the math, if it doesn't work.
I did the math, I'm pretty good at math. I'm just trying to track, are you providing the land for the developer? Like, is he, is he not buying the land?
He can't build in that lot then. The general rule of thumb that I work with, Mary, is that you take a piece of land, and three times the amount of price that you paid for the land would be three-quarters of it would go towards the property. So a hundred thousand dollar lot, we need, you put a three-hundred thousand dollar build out, and that would create a four-hundred thousand dollar home. So I agree with you, Tom, nobody's gonna take a hundred thousand dollar, two, much less a two-hundred thousand dollar lot. No developer would put a sixteen, eighteen hundred foot house in there.
But where, where are you gonna put them now? Like, who's, who's providing the land? And how are you gonna provide sixteen hundred square feet for these homes? And then you're talking about these young people coming in, they can't afford to live here, but yet they can afford to pay two-hundred fifty thousand dollars for their home? I'm just trying to do the math too. Because if they can't afford to buy a regular home on Chestnut for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, how can they buy a two-hundred fifty thousand dollar home?
They can afford to buy them, but they don't, they want the services and amenities that come with a modern house. And the cost of upgrading a house that might be sixty, seventy years old just doesn't make any sense. You could do it, yes, but if you take a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home we mentioned on Chestnut and put, you know, a hundred thousand dollars into renovations for a hundred and fifty, you're gonna, you may not end up with what, what you want compared to modern standards. I think the other concern, with the one you hear the mission about, you know, when her parents moved out here, what their parents weren't gonna, you know, not use some of the other stuff.
I think a major demographic change that's taken place is, young couples, as I see it today, do not want a fifty-foot by four-hundred-foot lot. Post-World War II, yes, they wanted to have a garden, they, they did, they did canning. I, I, I don't know any millennial, I don't know many people of any age that do any canning anymore, and they're not looking to throw their own fruit and what have you in their backyard, you know, they're, and it's primarily because they're two-income families. I have, I have two children, they don't need to work, they live in Cleveland, they're in, they're millennials, they're not millennials, they're in their early forties, and because of their work, they look at, at, you know, the situation, where they're saying, yeah, why don't you buy the house, I'm looking to downsize it. But I don't have a five, I don't have a five thousand square foot home that I'm downsizing, probably twenty-seven hundred square feet, so nice size, but I want less. And in terms, my, they both live in the community, both my adult children live in communities where they pay about a hundred dollars a month for external maintenance. That to me, they don't cut shrubs, they have all their grass cut, and my daughters, my both of my kids, that we both work hard, when the weekends come, we want to be able to spend time with the kids. We don't want to be doing outside yarding. And I agree, there are people that love it, I don't, I'm not detracting, I couldn't let them. I don't say let's ban canning in Independence.
Oh, we, we appreciate everybody's input. Again, this is not an issue that's gonna get settled in one meeting, but, uh, I think the issue of, of, at least the first topic, is that we're going to a future, uh, finance meeting, incorporate that, of course, we're gonna talk about our five-year plan, and we're also gonna talk about the budget for next year, but we're gonna talk about, uh, planning for the streetscape for downtown, and how much we reach, to, to, what our council's a whole appetite is, as far as how far we're gonna go with that streetscape and work with administration on that topic. As far as the, you know, your housing goes, that's, uh, been a topic for, for the ages and everything. Again, Kathy said we need to know where, where the land is that, that we're talking about here, and not necessarily, it could be downtown area, we have other plans, but land is, is very, is very scarce here in town so far. I doubt, uh, there's gonna be anything that's gonna change the, the landscape in Independence, because we just, available land is, is pretty much dwindling. I still, my views as far as the downtown, I, I still like the idea of green space, but, but, uh, again, we have time to let this develop over the years. I think the best decision, one that's well thought of, it's not gonna be, you're gonna please, uh, you're gonna please only serve the segments of the population, and again, our view is what's best for the, the entire community. And again, our reputation as such now, as a community, uh, very few people complain about the quality of life in Independence. Again, if you get older, it's just unnatural, I think all of us have gone through, have lived here long enough, uh, parents that have had to move out, had to go to, uh, nursing homes, and that, and that's just the, the matter of things at work. Uh, we do have, at least with Vista Springs coming down, we're gonna have, in the near future, assisted living here in town, and that's gonna be, at least for a certain segment of the population, is gonna help. Uh, I know it would have helped me if it came ten years ago, with, uh, having a, a parent to live close by and be able to live- by and be able to live in an environment that, you know, we could be able to, you know, to have dignity with their aging and have help with some of their medication and things of that nature. But we're going to ask, I mean, ongoing topic. The main thing to keep in mind as far as what council's gonna do is that I believe street scape is coming first, that's the top priority. We're going to be planning, I would expect something in the near future on that because we do have a lot of budgetary demands for the next two, three years on the northeast quadrant of Rockside Road and others. So, and we have a number of road projects, we wanna get the neighborhoods, a lot of the people have waited long enough to have their roads at the Brookside deal or anything else. So we wanna make sure that our roads and our infrastructure and sewers and everything else are in very good shape too. So, but the main idea of the workshop is for council to exchange ideas with each other to see where we're coming from. And today we incorporated getting some of the views of the public too, so we appreciate that. But with that, I think there I'm taking a motion to adjourn the workshop and then we'll, I don't know if you want a break of a few minutes or so, but we can go right into the special council meeting. We have this motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There, I'll turn over the special council meeting to you. And thank you once again to everyone who spoke. Appreciate your thoughts on that and, again, well, there's something, we usually have those in the evening so most people can attend, and we had a number of meetings in the evening regarding the resequest and the street scape downtown, so.
Would you like to call to order the special council meeting on Tuesday, July 31st, 2018? Order, please, if you could call at all.
Asef, Cordell?
Here.
Puska?
Here.
Here.
President?
Yeah.
Here.
And on the agenda we have.
I don't think, even if you're in fast track, if you could get through that process in less than a year, then it would come to council to vote and approve a PUD that received all those approvals.
So, from that last point, is that referendable to the people? If that vote, if the council voted for that PUD after all that year and everything, is that qualified, the public could put that on a referendum?
Yes, yes, unless council, which council has historically not done, any council, not just this council, could pass it on an emergency and then there'd be legal maneuvers back and forth.
Okay. So that's my question, thank you.
This doesn't take away the rights of the people to vote. Give to vote. Whether you want it is one thing, the referendum is always yours, if you don't like what's going on. Which is the same today, except it's put in a different perspective so that the developer doesn't have the issue that, "I'm not going forward because there's going to be a referendum against it," or a referendum on that issue. So it doesn't, it's not a slim dunk at all. There aren't any rights taken away from the voter, it's just where do they come in for the vote?
Jeremy Rowland, is there anything that you can add to the process or how this works as far as the PUD? I know you've given plenty of presentations to both the charter and to council, just put it in a way for the people in the audience that haven't attended those meetings.
Yeah, I think the law director did a pretty good job of summarizing the process, but yeah, the PUD ordinance is both in downtown and in the northwest quadrant have been in place for two or three years now. As the process goes, someone would have to come and develop a city-controlled piece of property because of restrictions on acreage, so thirty acres in the northwest quadrant, fifteen in downtown. They'd have to apply to rezone under the PUD ordinance and go through a pretty lengthy process of preliminary development review, which has public hearings before planning commission that goes to city council. They come back with final development plans that go through planning commission and city council, who ultimately will rezone the property to those development plans under the PUD ordinance. Now, the way the ordinances are written, both on Rockside and downtown, if, they're always intended to encourage mixed use. So as the law director stated, that would, there's a list of preferred or allowed uses in the PUD ordinances now. Retail, business, commercial, residential is in there. So if someone were to come to the city under the current PUD, if nothing was done at all with, as the charter's being recommended to be changed, went through this process and a component of the mixed-use project that was approved ultimately by council and rezoned through the preliminary development plan and the rezoning process included an element of housing that, under the current charter, had, say it was townhomes and had attached walls, for instance, then that piece of that project, just that phase, would go to the ballot automatically through the referendum process as described in the charter today. The rest of it would go forward, it's just the housing piece. So what this is proposing, as the way I understood it, would be, that would no longer be automatic referendum, the project would go forward with the housing, and then if the residents, through initiative petition, got enough votes or people to sign upon the, for a petition, then the entire PUD would go to the ballot, if I'm correct.
No, you are correct, and just to kind of put it in practical aspects of it for the members of the audience, no developer is gonna spend, in the PUD process, just a rough guesstimate, somewhere close to fifty to seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars at the very least to develop a PUD that is forecasted from either a lending perspective or investor perspective to generate certain revenue, ROI, over the course of the development and then take out a component, then essentially have to wait for a vote to go to one component of that. It just won't practically work, which is, Jeremy, as mentioned on Wednesday, is the reason why you have the downtown area and the northwest quadrant vacant and it's been vacant for this long. So, the PUD ordinances, I'd encourage everyone to look at, they're rather lengthy and they're rather onerous, but I, what council person Asef said, I would say that currently, right now, the charter puts it on the back end of a referendum, whereas with the PUD, you have all these box tops. And with the PUD, quite frankly, the whole ordinance, not that City of Independence designed it this way, it's been this way in land use for fifty years, is it's provide a collaborative so that the city, any municipality who is entertaining a PUD application is involved in shaping that PUD. So, I would guess and probably wager a dollar on the fact that across the country, there's not a single PUD where a developer came in municipality and that PUD that was eventually developed is the same PUD that they originally came in on because of the, like I said, the rather lengthy meetings and the involvement material in the city.
I guess in short, at the end of this process, if this was to pass, that the burden goes back to the residents to fight whatever developer wants to do. And that's what I believe is not right. Why should we put the burden back on them?
That's not true.
It absolutely is.
This would be a referendum. What you do would be right.
Exactly right. It goes back to the residents to fight it, that they've been to the polls a dozen times to say they have money. So now, we're gonna say, it's okay to do it, only in two locations, I can admit that, but the burden still goes back to them to take their time to fight.
And they already spent a hundred thousand dollars on the side.
The developers.
Yeah. I don't think it accomplishes what.
I don't think it accomplishes either. What could it set out to do? It all sounds good on front of the developer, but at the end of the day, he's gonna spend his money and he's still gonna get this because I know it's gonna happen. So, I mean, as a resident before a council member, why would I put this, do you have a chance to pass? Because now we're telling the residents, "Yeah, yeah, I'd like to sidestep you to see if this can go through." That's just wrong in my eyes. I mean, it's just wrong.
There's still the opportunity to go with that though, Tom? How is it sidestepping? I'm not sure I quite understand that. Tom?
You know what, there's six guys to sit to the ballot, I'm gonna be sitting.
No, I know, I respect your comments, I appreciate your comments. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how it's sidestepping if it still has the opportunity to go to the ballot.
How is it sidestepping, Tom? I guess it's not sidestepping.
That's a good thing.
Well, then also, if we have the master plan or the plan, that area plan, and council voted for it to include certain aspects so that the community's viable, then we should stand behind that master plan or that area plan and it is a component there.
But if you're going to want your.
Excuse me, please.
They're both for him.
And I would say call the voters.
Any further discussion? Call at all.
Asef?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Puska?
Yes.
Dariusy?
No.
Drakeus?
Aye.
Verberka?
Yes.
Wisniewski?
Yes.
Passes. Next we have ordinance 2018-105.
Tom?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance provision one, providing for the submission to the electorate of an amendment to Article IV, Section 2B of the city charter regarding the minimum qualifications of the finance director and declaring an emergency.
Motion to that.
That's right. Any questions? Let me know.
I just have a, this one I studied a long time. I had, because I was originally thinking it was a great idea, but the more I thought about it, the more I thought that would be limiting the pool of potential finance directors greatly. And I know there's a number of people that, residents that probably would have a degree in business experience in the financing area that would be, you know, would be quality, you know, maybe a very good person to work with council, to work with the mayor and work with the residents that is very organized and could have a very good finance department. So I think this limits too much the pool of potential candidates and I feel that I wouldn't only get a situation where you might only have a handful of people that would walk in. And again, you have to be willing to run for office and there's a number of people that are quality CPAs, quality finance people that just don't, you know, they don't have the taste for politics to be out there and have their reputation affected and that too. So, the more I thought about it, I thought, it's admirable, but then in a way, I'd like to have a pool available because I think, again, the resident can decide on a candidate that might be a very successful business person, that might have a number of years of running a successful business, is good organized and we're gonna lose the opportunity of that person being our finance director. So, I'm gonna be voting no on this particular.
My comments, I will be voting no on this. Not because it's a bad idea, but we're a big city today, thirty-one million, thirty-two million dollar budget and we're gonna get bigger, probably forty million by the, within ten years, eight to ten years. To limit this to an independent resident, because they're the only ones who could run for office the way this is written, means that any candidate who would like to run for office in Independence for here would have to move here and hope that he gets elected. This here should be, as it goes forward, an appointed position which opens the pool to finance director from multiple areas and not just from this city. Because this is a big city now with a big budget and a lot of money and we also need to take this position to a full-time position. Because we're really good with some big stuff today. We've got projects out there, we've got monies out there, we've got monies coming in, we've got gift issues, it just goes on and on. So I'll be voting no because this here impedes the ability of the mayor to hire a finance director should the current finance director not run again or go there. And then we would also have to change our charter to allow, I don't think it's in the charter though. I think if it is, to change that so it can be an appointed position, but this would be work in progress that we would discuss, finance committee and so on and see where we go with it. But I think that an appointed position with someone who are there for you, got all the qualifications and the vetting of that individual versus someone who runs for office. Running for office doesn't require vetting.
Councilman Asef? So, just for clarity purposes, so right now, the voters decide on the finance director?
Yes.
So what you're saying is that you wanna change that from the voters to the mayor appointing the finance director?
And that appointment, of course, is approved by council, just like the other positions.
And that's why you're voting no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I respect what you're saying, Councilman Asef, but I still think this is something that should remain with the voters. I'd like to ask our council representative, council person Wisniewski, who sat on the committee, did the committee at all talk about concerns about us not having an adequate pool and that it should become an appointed position or were they wanting it to remain as it is?
I don't know that they, there was a vague discussion about whether it should be taken away from the voters in Independence and become an appointed position. So really not a big discussion on that. I think the majority felt that it should still be in the hands of the voters. So the biggest part of the discussion was, okay, right now, the existing qualifications are, someone has to have a bachelor's degree in business, could be anything, it could be left-handed puppetry, okay? And they have to have five years of some type of business experience. Now, when the voters are voting on that, how do they verify what that experience is? And it's really hard to do that. So, what they decided to recommend is because we're such a big city that this person should have a bachelor's degree or some type of, a bachelor's degree in finance or accounting, thank you, thank you. And then you could easily verify that that person has some type of an experience that would serve the city well. So, really, to answer your question, no, only it becomes an appointed position and, you know, they just thought it would enhance. There was some discussion about, okay, if you now make this accounting and business, does that limit the pool? You know, do we have to worry that we will not have any candidates? And there was some discussion about that, but in the long run, it was really that it would better suit the city to have a better qualified person. Also, there is a process, so what if nobody runs? What if nobody runs? There's a process in place that takes care of that.
My biggest concern has to do with restricting the pool. It goes back to, if you start off, you have seven thousand people in town, you have approximately four thousand voters, of those four thousand voters, how many are qualified to be able to assume the position? As it stands now, if you have a business degree and experience, you can qualify. If you take and bring that restriction much further, we could end up potentially with a problem in that area because we don't have a candidate. I think that it's important that the residents still have the opportunity to be involved in selecting the finance director. I don't wanna hamstring the process by restricting the qualifications to the point that it'll be limited down to a small handful of people. And, you know, as it currently stands, we have some qualified people, I don't wanna bring that number into too small of a group. So I will be voting no, but realizing, of course, that we're continuing to keep it in the hands of the voters and the fact that we need to have an adequate-sized pool for someone to be selected for.
And again, thank you, Councilman Verberka. Again, for me, it's, I feel that the voters should decide and we should not. Because of the weeks and weeks of work that the committee did and the discussion, that I feel that it should be sent forward and let the voters decide that.
I agree with you, but I think that after, you know, the last try to review and none of the proposed amendments came to the ballot, I know that many of the people in the came to the ballot, and I know that many of the people in the community were concerned about that, so it's my view that the committee did their job. I don't necessarily support everything that we're putting forward tonight, but I do think it's the obligation of the people to vote on that, not necessarily us to block that.
Well, this is, you know, my vote no is no, we're touching on the committee, they did a outstanding job charter review. It's the fact that we didn't really discuss an appointed position versus continuation with the elected position. I don't think that came out of discussion out of the committee, but they assumed the elected position with additional qualifications. And I'm voting no again because I think it should be an appointed position, increasing the pool, not just citywide, but countywide, nationwide, and moving that position up to full-time.
Any further discussion?
I'm not supporting it, basically because of Dave said, and I talked to Dave about that last council meeting, I mean, I was, I think we limit our pool and color, and there's a lot of qualified people that could do the finance director's jobs who don't have those degrees that I know personally. And, I mean, Doc Asak could do a great job as finance director and, you know, he would not be able to even campaign to run for that position. So, I think we limit. And it could hurt her business in the long run. I think the voters, I mean, if finance is smart enough, that they could weed out the bad and elect the best. So, I think the process has worked, I'm like changing.
Call it all.
Brindell?
No.
Kapusta?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
No.
Drakeus?
Aye.
Verberka?
No.
Wisneski?
Yes.
ASAP?
And it will not be going to the voter people. Next we have ordinance number 2018-106.
Town only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of an amendment to Article four, section two, C, five of the city charter regarding purchasing and contracts and declaring an emergency.
Motion to that. Any questions on the adoption?
Just one, we're going to have that ordinance, we talked about the last...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the idea is that to have something in place on, should this pass or if it doesn't, on the informal bidding process, that we could go to the citizens and say, you know, four times in the past, you've said that you don't want the city to have this power, but the fact that we now have an ordinance in place that has a competitive bidding process, not always the competitive bidding that according to state did, that they competitive bidding process, that may provide some different perspective for the citizens as they approach this issue.
I think this issue was before us four, six years ago, I can't remember. Four, it was, I never made it to the voter people, and that was four back then, so I might as well have been before now. It's just a matter of dollars. It costs the city so much money to send any, any dollar amount over 7,500 or 7,500 out to bid. And we'd bid out a lot of things. So, this is just bringing this up to date, that if we can't trust the mayor to spend $15,000 through all our highs, I think we can do it. And in the long run, all it does is save the city money. So, it's not given him any more powers, everything still goes through council, we have the final vote. It's just a matter of bringing an old ordinance up to date.
Right, and I think an overarching all of this too is the fact that the things that we're talking about 90% of the time are things that have been approved through our five-year budgetary process already. It's just a matter of getting them actually purchased. So it's not like our eyes as a council are not aware of what might be happening. We have been apprised that we're going towards certain items and it's just a different way of doing it. And the existing limit of 7,500 has been there since 1970s?
Something like that, yeah.
That might be 60 or something.
I think when you put the inflationary factor...
You could, right, extend it over 40 years.
That's right, yeah, thank you.
I think if you put the inflationary factor on that $7,500, it would be much higher than $15,000 addition.
Well, it's still reasonable because the sale limit is $50,000. So in effect, even if they were to raise it to $15,000, I mean, it's still, it still gives a lot of controllables and doesn't, it doesn't really stretch it out to what the state does, you know?
Any further discussion?
Kapusta?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Drakeus?
Aye.
Verberka?
Yes.
Wisneski?
Yes.
ASAP?
Yes.
Brindell?
Yes.
And council, Wisneski, just putting it in perspective, I know the charter review commission always said the state may have a much higher budget, but it applies to state short villages and state short municipalities who have not availed themselves to a charter. So, if you think of a village that does not have a charter, it falls under the state statute, and that village may, by its very nature and definition, is smaller than our committee, and they can throw out and award carrots for $50,000 or less without going to the public.
So what else could go on for 2018, for the other...
Yes.
Yes. Something like that.
We have ordinance number 2018-110.
Town only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of an amendment to Article four, section two A of the city charter regarding election, term of office, and vacancy of the finance director and declaring an emergency.
Motion to that.
Second.
Any questions on the adoption?
We originally come up with this based on number two, but it might just be good public policy going forward.
Well, I think with the charter, the finance director had a two-year term by council on the mayor at that point originally. Now there's the, the finance director has a four-year term, so the potential that whoever got elected finance director could vacate the position months or days into it as the term, and without this, they could actually be in for four years. And what we're saying here is that when the next general election in two years comes to, that they have to stand up for elections. So, it allows, if you have someone that might not be, you know, might not be doing as good a job as you like, you don't have to wait four years to get rid or try to impeach him or whatever. You have the opportunity, the residents have an opportunity to vote in two years and get rid of them or have a better candidate for that position. So I think it fills up a way that was there because of the lengthening of the financial director's term.
Any further discussion? All in all.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Drakeus?
Aye.
Verberka?
Yes.
Wisneski?
Yes.
ASAP?
Yes.
Brindell?
Yes.
Kapusta?
Yes.
And it passes. Well, thank you for joining us for this exciting session.
Subway.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.